We're going to be dealing with code, and then city council, city clerk, mayor's office, and insurance fund. Let's open the pages of sixty-four.
Councilman Davidson?
Present.
Congressman Gavin?
Present.
Congressman Capstrath?
Present.
Congressman Mala?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
Two are absent, Congressman Scarey, Senator Lee, and Congressman Ross.
All right, so we're going to open up, Laurie, we're going to open sixty-four, ninety-one through ninety-two.
Yep.
Two-hundred, two-hundred-and-eight?
Yes.
Two-oh-three and two-oh-four is the other parts of that that are being scheduled that are in our office.
So, page sixty-four. Does everybody know Chris?
Yes.
We do. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good.
This is Chris's first presentation, so generally what you do is take two pages.
Yeah.
Let council know what may have been different.
Okay.
And then they'll, they'll jump in and ask questions.
Okay.
So, starting on page sixty-four, these are the examining board piece that are for the code enforcement office. We use a third-party testing agency to administer exams for plumbing and electrical, master electricians and master plumbers in the city of Binghamton, make sure that they're qualified to do work within the city of Binghamton. And we have a board for each of those trades that oversees the applications of people who would like to be licensed within the city of Binghamton. So, the first item, fifty-four for ten professional services, is the amount of money that we set aside for Prometrics, who is the testing agency. We issue six tests a year, three electrical, three plumbing. Each test requires the applicant's, each, each test applicant, it costs a hundred dollars to take the exam. For plumbing, it's a hundred and fifty. The proctor who administers the exam is three hundred dollars. So, when we add those up, the average of applicants that we have over the course of a year and the number of tests that we issue, we have a budget of six thousand nine hundred. And for twenty-twenty, we're proposing to reduce that by nine hundred dollars. So, we're looking at six thousand dollars for the year. That's based on the last three years of what we ended up using. Of that sixty-nine hundred dollars, we've thought we need to go a little bit lower on that. We've never actually used the entire amount, so we're proposing to reduce that by nine hundred dollars. The next item is a small stipend that we pay some of our constituents to sit in on the boards of examining plumbers and the board of electrical examiners. Again, they vet the applicants who are applying to be licensed within the city of Binghamton. They also work on reciprocal agreements with other municipalities, so that if licensing is provided by another municipality, we try to determine whether or not their qualifications would make their license plumbers and electricians qualified to work in the city of Binghamton. There are some occasions, such as Onehanna.
Are they reciprocal agreements with Onehanna and Norwich?
It's, it's different for each trade. I think that we have more reciprocal agreements with electricians than we do plumbers.
You do.
Yeah.
How about our surrounding areas, Vestal, Lundy, Caffin, City?
Vestal, we do not, because I don't believe that they have a permitting licensing process that's as stringent as ours. Johnson City does, had in the past reciprocated with us. There was something about their boards that had some, some problems with the way that things had been worded. We just put together a new agreement with Johnson City to reciprocate for plumbing. They have basically agreed to use Binghamton's testing services for all of their applicants. So, if you apply to Johnson City to be a licensed plumber in the, in the village of Johnson City, you would come to Binghamton and take our exam. If you pass our exam, then that's good enough to work for them, in which case the qualifications are identical, so we will be reciprocating with Johnson City, Town of Union, in the near future. Which is nice that we're opening that back up. It was open for years, it closed for about four or five years, there were some, a couple ripples in the water, and we got over that, we're putting that back on the table.
What happened with the, was it Norwich that we, the reciprocal union was rescind of at one point?
It was Onehanna.
Onehanna. Did they, they're...
The board is actually, I think the reciprocation is still in effect, but we're examining it a little more closely with respect to their journeyman. Their master licensed electricians have the same qualifications that ours have, but they don't have a journeyman licensing program. So, we do, and what we're saying is if you're coming down from Onehanna, you have to get licensed in the city of Binghamton. You, the master electrician can pull the permit, but unless he's also a journeyman, he can't actually perform the work. He has to hire locally from our pool of licensed journeymen. They have a little bit of a hard time with that, but we said if you can prove that, that your journeymen have the same qualifications as ours, then we'll allow it, but they've got to prove that. So, we're still at the point where if you can come down from Onehanna and pull a permit, but you cannot perform the work unless you pass the journeyman's exam, which it sounds like if master electrician would have those qualifications, but it's, it's a practical portion of the exam for journeymen that a lot of people have a problem with. So, when they, when they do the writ and they do fine, but we also require them to do a hands-on demonstration of wiring up the starter motor and making sure that they can do that properly, so we really want to make sure that they have all the qualifications and the journeymen. Otherwise, they have to hire locally.
Any more questions on page sixty-four? We'll move on to ninety-one and ninety-two, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
Are all the increases on the top of the page contractual?
No, we did change one of his code enforcement officers and made him an assistant supervisor building and construction, and put that person up for forty hours for thirty-five with a stipulation that we're really not taking the person off the street. Still on the street for thirty-five hours, doing a couple of hours of supervision and just, oh, I just stopped. So, he went from forty-two-eight to fifty-thousand, what was I saying? Yes. Yes. So, when we calculate the hourly rate of the forty-two-eight, and then we say that we're going to give that person five more hours a week, then basically they're, they're earning an additional six thousand dollars a year, so we're not really increasing their salary purely on the basis of taking on more responsibility. The salary is commensurate with the amount of work that they put in, the actual additional cost to be, take on more responsibilities as supervisors around a thousand dollars. All told, we're basically cutting my salary through different fees and services and some of our overtime and office supplies by almost thirty-three hundred dollars, and we're proposing a seven thousand dollar increase. So, the net increase is really closer to thirty-eight hundred. Not, not a big increase when we look at the, the size of the budget, it's less than one percent. So, we're, we're sticking within a pretty tight budget. But I think it's going to give us a lot more benefit than adding more personnel or adding a couple more dollars to the existing salaries. This person is going to give the constant supervision of the people who are on the street and actually be out on-site with the inspectors, assisting them with questions that they might have with regards to observations, procedure, document preparation, and make sure that we have a real consistent workflow from the inception of a complaint all the way through the resolution in the office or in the court with that, to the group that it takes. I think this is going to be highly beneficial for the office, and it's something that we've never had in the past, and it's really going to increase productivity, like I said, much more than taking that single amount of money and adding it to existing salaries. And we're not even coming close to, to that amount of money that we, we need to hire additional personnel. So, this is really the best bang for your buck.
How would you categorize sort of the level of work that your officers and inspectors have had? From your perspective, since you've, you know, taken over the department, I mean, is it, is it manageable? Is it, is there free time a lot of the time? Is there?
There's, there's not, there's not free time. What we have is a, a level of request for service that takes up a good portion of the time. When you don't have a service request or a re-inspection from an already existing case, then that's the time where they go out on the streets and they patrol. Now, patrolling doesn't mean knocking on doors and soliciting inspections, it does mean, mean making observations of exterior properties and structures. But given that, so far this year, we've looked at over five hundred notices violation that were created just for patrolling. So, they're, they're staying very busy, they're making sure that they take a good look at their neighborhoods and see the things that, that need to be done before they're brought to our attention from a constituent, trying to make sure that, that, you know, that the properties are being maintained prior to it becoming an issue and having somebody who are really upset about the conditions in the neighborhood.
How do you, you know, since taking it over and since you have this new and exciting perspective, how do you feel about your department at this point? And, you know, the conversation that we have had with your predecessor and also with specific inspectors and officers is just that, you know, there is, there is, they love, you know, the, the job is, is sometimes exciting, it's important, but there is this notion that payment is, is lower than it maybe would be compared to comparable municipalities and per the job and the level of risk. You know, that's something that I've, that I've heard time and time again. Is that, is that something that you have found to be the case still?
I, nobody right, nobody right now is complaining about the salaries. If you remember earlier in the year, we adjusted the base salaries up a little bit from what we had in the past, they were very appreciative of that increase. The senior-level inspectors are making salaries that they're comfortable with. I don't think that there's another municipality that pays more without getting more. If we look at Syracuse, and we look at Rochester, and we look at Albany, those inspectors are not doing existing building code enforcement alone. The reason that they're getting paid more is because they're also building inspectors and looking at smaller jobs like bathroom renovations, decks and forges and things like that. We currently have that separated, so that our officers are inspecting exterior and interior conditions of existing properties, only they're not doing new construction inspections, they're not doing plan review, they're not creating blueprints. Our building bureau takes care of that. So, I think they're being paid a fair amount for what they do, and if we ever wanted to get to the point where we said, let's have them do, do all tasks, let's have them, in addition to taking care of property maintenance, go ahead and start doing construction inspections, then we're warrant a higher salary. But, you know, quite frankly, I think that we have so many existing structures that are not experiencing new construction, what they really need is to be maintained. And so, having these six inspectors focusing on the maintenance of our current properties is really getting us a lot closer to where we want to be than giving them additional responsibilities that might only appear once every month. Right now, our building bureau is very good at keeping up with the new construction and renovations, and so I don't really see a need of bringing on six more inspectors to duplicate services. I think that we could always, you know, offer them more, nobody's going to reject, you know, an increase in salary, but I think we're at a point right now where they're quite comfortable, and it's frankly the first time in years where, because of the cost of living increases that we've seen with their, their contract negotiations, they're at levels that they're pretty comfortable. I, I would say the only person who's probably not at a point where they would like to be is our administrative assistant, and if you look at the, the personnel salaries, she is the lowest paid person in the office.
Has, and has she voiced that to you?
She has, and all of her predecessors have. It's always been an issue in the office, because the amount of work, she is really the hub of the wheel. She's taking in, you know, information from every direction and managing a lot of information and distributing a lot of the workload to, to the appropriate people. So, it's, you know, in addition to, to the administrative responsibilities of payroll and data maintenance, it's a lot of, you know, fielding calls and talking to the general public.
Would you, would you find that she has a, a similar level of workload and responsibility and maybe even authority as another code inspector manning the office?
No, but she has similar, similar workload, she has a very busy day, she doesn't have any idle time. I think the, you know, again, the, the administrative assistants in other municipalities that are earning significantly more have also had training that allow them to answer questions and have direct knowledge of the codes as they're written. So, without that training, she's just, you know, doing the best she can to answer questions for people on the phone or transfer them over to somebody who can answer the question. I think, you know, the municipalities will find that the administrative assistant in the code enforcement office also has enough training that they can confidently answer questions and guide people to the resources that they need. So, I wouldn't be opposed to offering her a lighter level of training than we give the other inspectors and giving her the skills to be able to field calls more confidently and give the constituents much better directions.
I, I mean, I think, is that possible? Because sometimes I do get feedback from constituents that like, you know, the, I call it the code enforcement office, and they didn't, like, the person that I spoke to didn't seem to know the lingo, didn't seem to know exactly what I was talk, what I was talking about is, is getting the person's fielding these calls, training, something that's, that's possible.
I haven't thought about it until right now, but I think now that we're talking about it, it would be a very valuable idea.
I do hear that from my constituents, too. Obviously, I have to talk to this many people.
It's, it's very difficult to, to have somebody who has an expertise in database management and, you know, typing and filing to be able to take on the responsibilities of answering questions that are, quite frankly, questions for code officers.
So, what does, what does that level of training look like?
We basically give our, our inspectors six weeks of training right now. There is another level of training, it's a three-week program. It's, it's three days a week for three weeks, and it gives them the title of building safety inspector, and it's, it's kind of like a slightly less qualified than a New York State code enforcement official, but it gives them enough background to understand how the books work and how the codes are written and where she would be able to look for references to give people valid answers.
Is that something that could fit into her schedule?
Of course, yeah.
Do you think that she would want that?
Yeah, that would have to be a discussion that we'd have to have. I don't, I don't think that she'd be opposed, nobody's opposed to having better tools to do their job.
I mean, I, I would, I would be willing, I mean, we just transferred an additional five thousand dollars into contingency, so I'd be willing to take, you know, a thousand dollars out of that into bumping up her salary and getting it much closer to the code inspector salary, and...
You can't do that.
You think the, the, the union would say no?
It has to be negotiated with the union first and compared to other salaries in that same admin, right? You don't have the authority to change union salaries. No, the only way we could do it is do a title change and eliminate the administrative assistant and create a building safety inspector who has administrative responsibilities. Well, they can manage it.
I, I, I was, I'm sorry, Laurie just corrected me, you're not the union, you manage the best, you do have that. Thank you, Laurie.
Well, how much does the training cost? The kind, like, the kind of training that we just spoke of, the six-week training?
It would be a three-week program.
A three-week training, okay.
It would be close to four hundred dollars.
I would say, I would say, I'd pay for a training, but I wouldn't want to increase it at this point. But I would definitely pay for the training and then, and then go from there.
And see how she goes?
Yeah, because there's time to change it later on, right?
Yeah, we definitely train, change it later on.
Yeah.
And I think, we, kind of, what normally happens is we try to get people brought up to a speed, not, what's happened here in the past is people come in at this level and they're not ready to do that, so then all the people see them being on their feet. But if we get her trained properly and she starts doing a good job, it makes sense to go in and then do a title change for, for, you know, a more sophisticated position.
How long has she been in the position?
It's got to be two years now.
Okay. And how, how long did your, how long was your predecessor?
That position was vacant for, I think, eighteen months before she arrived.
I don't remember.
It's, it's a tough position to fill. And it's, it's not because we can't find somebody who's qualified with data management and understanding UNIS, you know, doing the filing and the things that need to be done, it's, it's the combination of skills that you need to be able to do this job.
If she's voicing concern about her pay, is, is losing her something that you're...
I hope not. I, I, you know, I, in fact, when we were preparing for the budget, one of the questions was, is anybody anticipating retirement in the upcoming year? And I asked her, and she said, no, not in twenty-twenty. So, I think that was an opportunity for her to speak up if she felt like she had one foot out the door. I don't sense that that's the issue, but I certainly think that she would be more confident and more comfortable doing her job with better training. I mean, we, we negligent if we had the opportunity to provide it for her, we didn't. There's, there's no sense in having somebody there who could perform better with additional training, we just didn't think of offering it.
You have money?
Okay, can I just, what we're talking about generically is, should the, that person in that position? If we're going to start talking about individuals, we're going to go into executive session.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk about the position and whether that position's to have training and pay, but if we're going to talk about individuals, that's...
Okay, so, do you have, you have money in your, in your budget for, for training for this individual?
Travel and training, um... Forty-two, what am I shifting out of? Forty-two, fifty. We, we barely made it this year. We really are, are getting right down to the bottom of the barrel, so I can't say that that year is going to be like this. We had three new hires that had to go through training programs.
All right, so if you need an extra four hundred, can you do a budget transfer or do a...
Should we take it out of contingency or what?
Can we put four hundred to this budget through contingency or no?
For what?
For training.
Yes.
Want to do that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to move four hundred dollars from contingency into travel and training on page ninety-two in order to do a three-week training for the current administrative assistant, so that he or she can field calls more effectively for constituents.
Wonderful, it's a great idea.
Can I get a second?
Second. Everybody.
All right. All right, so we'll vote on the, moving money out of contingency, correct?
Yes.
Moving four hundred for contingency and put it into the training line. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I won't ask if anybody's...
It's a great idea.
And what I will say is, like, if, if, if she seems open to it, but then, like, on the inside, you feel like her reaction is like, well, I'm about to get more work and not more pay, or any person in that position would feel that way, then, then, communicate, communicate that.
Yeah, it's not more work, it's more education.
I agree, I agree. I just, I just, I agree, I just want to...
It's easier, it's better reputation.
And I, I see it that way as well, but...
For the person hypothetically in that position.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't like losing good people, that's all.
What do you think? On, Chris, on page two-oh-three, looking at the vacant property fee, and both of the fees say with development plan, they mentioned a development.
One says no development plan.
Right, right, they, they both mention a development plan, I guess I'm curious...
Let me, let me just stop you there, Dan. I don't know, I don't know if we'd be qualified to answer that question. Reason being is that the vacant property officer is under the planning and housing division department, so it's not one of the salary lines that I pay for out of my budget, and I really don't know, you know, how much of his salary comes through grant money and how much of his training comes from zombie grants. In fact, they're all at a bargaining conference in Georgia right now for, you know, the administration zombie grant and extending...
I just have a general question, if you're asking, maybe...
Maybe I'll, yeah, I, I just didn't want you to get too far into it before I let you know that's, that, I don't have that page, so I don't know if I can even...
All, I'm just curious to know if, if these development plans, how, how often they come to fruition? You know, when somebody submits a development plan to reduce the fee, does that often result in, in a better outcome or what?
I, I think that there has been quite a bit of development, and I think that that's an enticing way to give people incentive to, to develop their properties rather than leave them vacant for another year. They're not, that reduced fee is not honored based on nothing. They do have to come over to the planning, to the building department and get a building permit and be very specific in their scope of work, exactly what they plan to do, give us a cost of construction and pay a permit fee. If a permit's good for a year, if at the end of the year, the work has not been completed, they don't get that, that same, you know...
So, the development plan comes with other, other costs associated with it?
Of actually doing, of remodeling and renovating. If after one year, there's been no improvement to the property, they won't be given that lower fee a second time.
Okay.
But there have been quite a few people that took advantage of it and did make improvements to the property and got them occupied again, so I know that Jonathan's been very successful with that. There are the occasional people who just say, I'm just going to go through the motions and save myself a few bucks, but it only lasts for one year, and, and, you know, quite frankly, if they're not going to make the improvements, then they're going to be right back to, you know, owning a vacant property with, with a higher rate on an annual basis. It's not often the people, they're, I'm not saying that nobody has tried that, a couple of people have, but I, I'd say more often than not, it's been beneficial rather than just a, just a, you know, a backdoor for people to dodge.
If the property is, is runnable, but it hasn't been rented, is there a time limit before you rent it, before you get charged a vacant?
For thirty days.
Thirty days on what?
If you, if you have a house that's vacant for thirty days or more, then Jonathan has the obligation to start charging you an annual fee for, for keeping the property vacant.
But if, let's say it's, it's a rental property, ready for rent, but you're having a hard time renting it?
You know, he, he's, that, that would be different if you're just, you know, down on your luck finding a tenant, or if your house is for sale and, you know, you had a couple of contracts that fell through, that's different. I think what we're looking at is basically properties that were condemned, properties that were abandoned.
So, is that a discretion of the code enforcement officer?
It's a discretion of vacant property officer. He, she collaborates with us to gather information, gather data on the case. So, if we had a property that was so dilapidated and it was unhealthy, unsafe or dangerous, and we deemed it unfit for habitation, and that owner makes no attempts to improve the conditions and just leaves it in the state of the sin, that, that's a bona fide vacant property that needs to pay five fifty a year.
Whether it's commercial or residential?
Right.
How would, how is the five hundred dollar fee determined? Like, is that to cover some particular cost or just, did, was, was it calculated to produce a certain outcome? Do you have any sense of that?
And do you know how that was established? Is that, I think it was in, it was a work session.
That was around two thousand...
I was going to say, that was probably ten, twelve years ago. Uh, because a determination made that that was kind of the, between the police having to go, that was a reasonable cost of what vacant properties, the impact it had on city employees, and that's kind of how they came up with it.
From eleven years ago.
Yeah.
And has the fee gone out?
No.
So, that's a significant number for people, they already complain about...
And they do, like, your phone calls, huh?
About...
The five hundred dollars.
Right, the calls I get are...
I think it's...
I complain about the vacant properties charged.
I get that, too.
Yeah.
But they, they pay the fee and then I get phone calls about the fees, so I'll come in, I have to pay five hundred dollars, that's not fair. Well, you let your house go up. You know, let's go up and rent it up or sell it or whatever. Give somebody else a chance.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess I'm just curious to know if it's still producing the outcomes that it's set out to produce, that they had a lot of complaints about vacant properties.
How, how is that paid, is that paid through your taxes or is that a separate fee?
The estate is separate.
That's a separate fee.
It's a separate fee. This is... Yeah, if it's not paid, it goes through city court.
Okay. Any more questions on any of these pages?
Yeah, I have a question about the, this is more just for my own edification, we see the, the building permit, residential reconstruction alteration, there's one, two, three, four, five, I've done with all, all the same title, and I guess I was wondering what the, um... I've done with all the same title, and I guess I was wondering what the distinction between those five separate fees are.
What change did you make?
Oh, sorry, I'm on page two oh four, it's not page over. And I guess it's just the estimated cost of the renovation?
Yeah, the cost of a building permit is based on the amount of the cost of construction. So it's a flat rate up to twenty thousand dollars. And it's a different rate for commercial and residential. So residential, new construction would be the twenty-five dollars, maybe you're putting an addition on your house. New construction for residential over twenty-five thousand dollars becomes point seven five percent of the cost. So twenty thousand dollars, it's a hundred and fifty, the maximum amount that you would pay. For example, we have the Fifty Front Street at twenty million dollars, it would be significantly higher, but we stopped at twenty-five thousand for the permit fee. So while a twenty million dollar job would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar permit fee, we stopped at twenty-five thousand for the max permit fee. A twenty million dollar job would be significantly higher, but we capped off. So there's different, it's a fee structure that's set up on whether it's commercial, residential, whether it's, you know, a high cost of construction, significant amount being infested, or if it's just a small remodel of an existing structure. And in addition to paying what we call the entire project cost, which is what we just discussed, there's also additional fees for electric plumbing and mechanical. Generally speaking, they're about twenty-five to fifty dollars, depending on whether it's residential or commercial. And two dollars per device. So if you're doing a renovation on your house, you'll pay the entire project cost, say it's fifteen thousand dollars to put an addition on your house. And in that space, you're gonna have twenty outlets, two light switches and an overhead light. You'll pay two dollars per device plus a thirty-five dollar flat fee for the electrical inspection. So it's just a way of covering the cost of the inspections and the data entry and keeping track of all the records that go along with projects like that.
Because we just did that a couple of years ago too.
Sorry about that?
We just did ours a couple of years ago, I think it was two years ago.
Updated the fees or created them?
Updated them.
I mean, more, I think they were significantly less than what they are now.
Yeah, they've gone up since two thousand eighteen is when we saw a pretty big increase on a lot of them.
Are there actually any changes here in the fees?
Yeah.
No.
We, you know, we do have one fee that's not even in here that needs to be added in, and that's the parking garage operating permit fee. New York State threw a bill sponsored by Donald Lopardo in response to the parking collapse over at Lurds Hospital. Has mandated that all municipalities administer a parking garage operating permit, which means that anybody who has a parking garage, like Lurds Hospital or Twenty Holly Street has underground parking, has to get an assessment every three years, they have to bring that assessment to municipal review to make sure that the parking garage is in good, safe condition. And they have to obtain an operating permit, which lasts for three years. We need to establish a fee for that permit program, speaking with other municipalities, being that it's a three-year license. These seems like the appropriate amount that we're getting feedback from other municipalities, that's three hundred dollars for a three-year permit. So for places like Two Court Street where we have, you know, Merrill Lynch and Twenty Holly Street, Doubletree and Lurds Hospital, those entities would be obligated to pay three hundred dollars every three years for a parking garage operating permit.
What's it cost for an assessment though? Three hundred dollars is reasonable.
It's reasonable.
But the assessment must cost?
The assessment, I imagine...
Imagine a few thousand dollars.
In the range of thousands.
Really scary.
I think it goes a long way to mitigate the risk that's involved with operating a parking garage. And some places like Lurds may gladly pay the three thousand dollars to be able to have proof to their insurance companies that their parking facilities are in good standing. It'd certainly, you know, be a lot more expensive to pay out the damages and...
If someone doesn't comply, in three years, what happens at that point?
The first round of assessments are due when, tomorrow. If they don't comply, then we have to summons them into court and have them answer to a judge as to why they didn't obtain the parking garage operating permit as required. With regards to if the assessment comes in, if they do get the assessment and they submit it to us and an engineer has declared that certain portions of the facility are unsafe and hazardous, then it's incumbent upon the code enforcement office to go to the facility, identify that location and barricade it to prevent use by their customers and their clients until repairs can be made.
So, I mean, so if they go in front of a judge and they didn't comply and the judge says, look, is there a fine set up or is there any...
They could shut the parking facility down, Chris.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I don't know what they, I don't know what they...
He said they shut it down.
And I think, and if you didn't provide any reports from an engineer, you have no assessment to determine whether or not the facility is safe to operate, then we can only assume that it's not and that we would have to barricade the facility and no longer...
I was wondering what recourse was.
It's brand-new territory for us, you know, it was just brought upon, it's just, you know, rolled out last November. The first round of inspections are due on October first of this year. It's news to everybody. We gave them all any advance notice.
This is state law, right? This is what you're having the public hearing on the night of voting.
Chris, so we're adopting it as a local law, even though it's already been established by the state. Other municipalities are way ahead of us that have been doing it voluntarily on their own, in Syracuse, other places like Almyra, Ithaca, are just adopting it as it came out of the state, Department of State, so a lot of those...
So we're adopting it by a local law is pretty much what the state law is?
Yes.
Do we have to...
Identical.
Identical, okay.
Do we have to follow this same outline process for our own garages as well, like the Water Street, State Street garages?
We do, yeah.
So what does that mean? Labs pays the three hundred dollars or, I mean, we own the garage?
No pain for whether it's us or Labs.
Right, okay.
Do we need to budget for that? I mean, it's not a lot of money, we'll find it. Okay.
Like I said, it's new territory. It's a little, it's a little staky because our facilities are probably the most flawed of all the ones in town. And some of the facilities are shared between us, the Department of State and the Burn County basement, sub-basement. So it's new territory for us. We're just gonna have to navigate it as best we can and see what the outcomes are.
Okay, so we have to add that in now?
I'm suggesting that we add in an operating permit fee into the fee schedule.
Do you guys think of three hundred dollars?
Sure sounds reasonable for a three-year permit.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to create a parking garage operating permit for the fee of three hundred dollars, which lasts three years.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to accept pages sixty-four, ninety-one, ninety-two and...
As amended.
As amended, and then the, and two oh four as amended.
And two oh three as well.
Two oh three as well.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris, I don't guess... What was done on two oh three?
We gotta accept page anyway, right?
No, unless there's something new or you've changed. Did we change anything?
No, we did not. No, we did not.
And that's not...
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question for you. Did they vote on all pages?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we're made aware of some of the Taylor and Bert Adams have the stand-up role, garbage cans, and even leaving them on the utility strips. Have you had many complaints about that?
On the Parlor City Councils?
No, on regular streets.
On regular streets. We have, the only complaints we've had are about the facilities or the lack of facilities at Parlor City Councils. That's a problem that's been...
Well, I posted an email sent you last week.
We're working on, yeah, we're working on coordinating with the planning department and engineering department to establish a separate way of dealing with those.
Since right now, from what I gathered, the only remedy is for the BPW to pick up the garbage.
Okay, you know, I did, we did actually feel the complaint about that recently and it dealt with a couple of specific addresses, so it's not a citywide problem. There are some people who use private, Bert Adams, and you're right, the containers are not being maintained and taken care of the way that most residences do with their trash cans and recycling receptacles. We are dealing with those people. We have collaboration with Department of Public Works that reinforce the idea that if they can't maintain their containers, then we will remove them. If the fee is built right into it, they're renting those from Taylor, Bert Adams, if the city confiscates them, then they're into Bert Adams or Taylor or whatever they know that those containers cost and then replacement of them if they wish to continue using those services. So it's not so much that we would bring them into court and have a judge assess a fine. I think the fine of having us confiscate their containers and having to reimburse the...
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you think that city council would pass a ban, something that, we already have it where they can't be on the street, whether we could establish a fine.
We certainly could, absolutely. The way it's written right now is that it's what I, we've described, that we confiscate their containers.
It's not cheap.
Even the taller fifty-gallon cans.
Fifty-gallon on the rollers, but they're, what happens is, because I called the companies, when I saw them, they said their drivers are only allowed to pick up the cans. What happens is they leave them out there, they overflow, there's stuff that gets thrown out and around the sidewalk and around the utility strip and they're not allowed to touch it. So that would be back up to the landlord again for the...
Honestly, Councilman, it's, we almost have two ways of approaching it. We can have the containers removed and have them responsible for reimbursing their garbage facility. We can also cite them with existing codes that address exterior property maintenance. And if they fail to maintain the exterior premises of their, including the utility strips, then they are subject to being brought into court and having a fine. So they would actually have to pay three times if you think about it. If we ticketed them for failures to maintain exterior property, they'd get a fine from a judge. And then they have to reimburse Taylor for three cans that were confiscated. Then they have to buy three more cans from Taylor so that they continue to use their services. That's a big chunk of change that's gonna be a lot more than...
So you have all that available to you?
We have that available to us now. And we plan on making sure that we enforce that and then use what we have available to stop that from happening. I only know of one location at this point where that's an ongoing problem, but we certainly welcome any tips that we can get.
Are you talking about the one on Court Street?
Yeah, yeah, Court and Waterford.
Yes.
Yeah, if we can't, you know, if we don't have eyes on it or we don't notice the pattern taking place and somebody else does, we always welcome any assistance we can get from constituents as far as reporting what's going on in the neighborhoods.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Is it you that's up?
Yeah.
Yep. Council, good evening. Did you cut to the city council question this year?
Not yet.
Let's see, what page is that now?
Page fourteen.
Yes. And the whole page, right? There's the whole section, twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-one, sixty-three.
There's no fees. You don't need to do those. Drop that line.
Okay. Page when?
Fourteen.
Fourteen is the first one.
The wages have the consumer price index increasing for next year, which we don't like to change it. That's part of the legislation, it's just, I think it's one twenty percent.
Is this not for city council numbers? Before, for years, it was established that it was the same salary year after year, until we went a few years ago and raised it.
I thought it was still maximum of ten.
Yeah, it was a maximum of ten, and then for some reason, we put in this, what do you call it? Yeah.
I'd want it to stay at ten.
I would too, and there's no reason...
I agree with that.
Yeah. That's quite, I mean, it was seventy-five hundred for twenty years. And now, in the last five years, we went from seventy-five hundred to ten thousand. How really think it should be, cost of living increased every year?
I mean, the point of why you did this, and it's gonna come up in other things in terms of the budget, is to take the politics out of it. So that people aren't saying this one way or another at any given time. What you should be doing is that at least a year in advance of there being a new city council, deciding what the fee should be for that city council for the next four years. That can be ten thousand, you can leave it flat, you can have it increased. But in the absence of doing that, the law states it goes up by CPI.
So that's already established?
You can't do this as part of the budget.
We can't change this number?
We have to do that.
Not as part of the budget, you have to change the ordinance.
It's gotta be non-budget stuff, right?
You have to amend the ordinance.
Did we do an ordinance stating the cost of living?
Yes. And the point of doing it was, again, it was to take the politics out. Was to either you do it for the four years well in advance, so that there's...
But ten, correct me if I'm wrong.
Or you do it for the CPI increases.
The ordinance states, as set by city council, or in the absence...
It says if you take no action, then it increases by CPI.
So why can't we change this to be our action? Why is this not city council action, us changing this?
Because you didn't, the action is the ordinance.
But the ordinance...
The action is the ordinance that set it at ten thousand. Unless you amend the ordinance to create a new salary, it goes up by CPI.
If we have a...
You don't set your salary by the budget, you set it by ordinance.
So if we have a majority opinion on that, we can probably do that before the end of the year.
Can we do that right now?
No.
No, it's gotta be an ordinance, it's gotta be introduced to amend the ordinance, I imagine, right? Or be ordinance.
But then what you're doing is you're setting salaries five weeks before there's an election.
Is that a bad thing?
To me, it's more political than anything.
Oh, for freezing them, how's it a bad thing? What we're doing is, we intended to do is freeze it at ten thousand.
That's what it was supposed to be.
Well, the cost of living was always in there.
That's not, that's not political for freezing, I don't think, though.
Anything you do with a salary five weeks before an election is political, all in the other.
I take that seriously, that opinion, but isn't, you wouldn't say it's more political to make a change right after an election where people know...
Well, that's the point, you shouldn't be. That's why it built in CPI. If this had been done a year ago, you would have said, okay, for city council for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, it will be X. Nobody's announced who's running, nobody knows. It's a full year in advance. You do it that way, that to me is not political. You have no idea who it's going to impact when you do it.
So at the end of the, so at the beginning of the year, if the new city council at some point wanted to make it for the following election, say we're gonna set it at ten five, the following...
For the next four years.
Twenty-three, whenever it is.
But then you've got four years of CPI increases. It's until that point.
Yeah.
And I personally don't think that the city council needs four years of CPI increases after a, you know...
Well, we let it go by. I mean, I don't remember that...
I don't remember I didn't ask that.
I didn't, I didn't pass that out.
It was next year, apparently it was.
It was in twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
That's when I voted no, on the races.
A good time.
And the CPI was... So we have a chance to change this after the election.
We could change it whenever we want, it doesn't have to be...
Frank just, Ken Francis says it looks political.
If you want, you can change the law now, that's up to you.
I don't see how it's more political now than it would be after the election where you...
Well, they shouldn't be changing, they can't change their own, they shouldn't be changing their own salary after the election, or you should.
Exactly.
Either way.
So then you could do it after, you know, November fifth or whatever.
There's actually, there's only two, uh, no, uh.
See, that, that's not, I, I, I understand where Ken's coming from, I mean, it's not fair to the next city council, it should be up to them to do it.
No, but Ken's saying it shouldn't be up to them.
Well, no, it should be up to them to change it for the next city council after them. They're gonna get a CPI which will be, end up being around ten thousand five hundred, like he said. They could, they could freeze it at ten thousand five hundred. It really shouldn't be up to us to, we're not gonna be here. So it's not up to us to change their, hey, that's what he's coming up with, I was saying. It's not fair. I don't think that's what Ken's saying.
I think, I think what he's saying is that if you wanted to have done that, you should, it should've been done before.
It should've been done before, before anybody knew.
You just never gave what you thought.
Yeah.
We have to lobby the new city council to change it.
I remember Ken was very clear in his instructions when I came up.
Actually, during last year's budget, we had this exact conversation.
Exactly, same conversation.
So we could avoid this discussion this year.
I remember, I remember, is that conversation.
I remember as well.
Tonight, the same thing.
Yeah, exactly, we're gonna, that's what I think and move on.
Yep.
That's exactly what.
Yeah. All right. Then we settle down. One way or another, we're gonna, Chris. Pages twenty-three, twenty-four. That travel and training is three hundred and fifty dollars, that was fifty dollars per councilperson, wasn't it?
Yep.
What, what travel and training did we get today?
We've never done it.
Okay.
We've never, we, we've used the money for.
We donated the money.
We donated the money to the city school district one time, they were building a bench, the kids were, not to the school district themselves, but they were building some kind of, uh.
Yeah, uh, it's over at, at the high school.
Yeah, at the high school, uh, what was the, I forget what, it was a bench of some kind or.
Well, what fifty dollars is a travel training and get you?
Uh, compared to Kansas City.
Kansas City.
I mean, we, if we donate, if we have donated, why not just take it out of the budget if we're not discussing it? Because.
It might be, it might be, someone might need to go, say the president might need to go to Hawaii.
No, for three hundred and fifty dollars, you're not gonna.
I was invited to, I was invited that time to the.
Somebody wanted to go to Albany for like a training thing. Probably up in bed and cost you three hundred bucks.
Yeah, but you're only getting fifty.
Well, I appreciate it.
Per person, right?
Keep in mind, in, in January, we are gonna have a handful of brand new council members on.
Yes.
It could bring training into us still.
That's no point.
We could pay you guys to do the training.
I don't think so. You don't want me, you don't want me.
I'll be, uh, after all the drinks on the.
Um, are there any changes in the, uh, personal services for the city clerk's office?
There's been no increases to the clerk and the assistant clerk, correct?
Correct.
You know what, I would like to, uh, call executive session.
I'll second that. Can I, before you do that, just go back to, if you're discussing the salaries of the clerk and the deputy clerk as.
In general.
In general, that does not require executive session. If you wanna talk about the individuals, right, then let's go into executive session. Because in general, salaries are about the position, not necessarily about the people. But, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, 'cause when we get to the mayor's pay, you're not gonna go into executive session because you don't talk about the mayor's.
It's more the individual pay here, so I would, I would feel more comfortable.
That's fine, I just wanted to clarify.
All right, I second the executive session. So if Chris is comfortable, that's why Chris.